Okay. Roll call, Jared.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Tammy Blank?
Sure.
Cindy Brode?
Here.
Julia Tomarki Kubrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harley?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Dr. Rig?
Here.
Dr. Shaker?
Here.
Mr. Schruth?
Here. Okay, thanks, Jared. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting this evening. I do not have a superintendent's me- uh, message, but I believe there's some public comment. Uh, Keaton Stantz?
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, the board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I'm here to represent a group of East Bay parents, uh, kind of from this end of the district. Uh, basically, at the, uh, average summary of this year at this point, um, our school bus is arriving about forty-five minutes later than last year on the PM run. Um, we're looking for an opportunity to speak at next Monday's transportation meeting. This forty-five minutes is derived from a combination of two. We are seeing a arrival time of twenty-five minutes later than our postcard for this year. And the postcard is about nineteen or twenty minutes later than what we realized last year. So I understand there's a reconfiguration. And the first nineteen minutes of my personal note card, we understand that's part of the reconfiguration. I've spoken with the bus driver and the transportation director, and it sounds like the twenty-five minutes later that we're seeing on the note card is as good as it's going to get. That's what I've been assured. Um, that's really changed family planning for mealtime, extracurricular events. And we're concerned as the weather gets more difficult that we don't see any way that this time's are going to improve. Um, that puts us through nearly a five o'clock arrival for our children. It's an hour and ten-minute bus ride is about what we're looking at. And our community is only four and a half miles away from where we stand right now. Just seems like there's something we should be able to do to improve that. Uh, all I'm asking for is an opportunity for us to speak or sit down and look for some ideas, or at least a place on the agenda the next Monday night's meeting at five-thirty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Keaton, thank you. Uh, so, uh, superintendent's report.
Thank you, sir. Um, a couple of things just to update the board and the public. First, let me welcome all of our guests. It's an honor to have all of you here. I got to meet a lot of you um, last Friday, and it was just an absolute pleasure. And it's also great to have these three young ladies here with us this evening as well. So just a couple of things, uh, to make sure the board is aware. Number one, Governor Wolf signed into law that free breakfast, uh, universal free breakfast will start here in October. We are working on some communication and planning on our end. We'll get it out to families here later this week or next week. We also, in October, are starting our Twenty-First Century After-School Tutoring Program. Uh, that will be occurring, uh, again, starting October second for several days during the week. We are working on, you know, gathering information, sending out permission forms, and we'll get that out here within the next week or two to our families for those who want to stay after school and be provided a hot meal, some after-school activities, and then uh, homework help and/or tutoring. We're working on that, so we'll be sure to communicate accordingly. I just want to let you know as it's coming down, we're preparing for that. We're also excited to host, uh, on October seventh, a Countywide in Service Day, where we will have four or five of the seven school districts in Indiana County here on our premises, working, learning, sharing best practices together. We're quite excited about that. Also, last Friday, September ninth, was the first day that we got to wear the, uh, Indiana, uh, "We Are Better Together" shirts. Uh, I got to applaud the students. I got to meet with them last week, have lunch with them, gotten to know what their priorities are, what they're doing, and they're going to brief you here today. But you do have a lot of great kids, uh, in the Indiana area school district who are trying to make a difference. Tonight, they're going to talk to you about what they're trying to do for mental health, what they're trying to do to create a better school climate and school culture. And then when you look at the term leadership, they meet that that definition. So it's an honor and really a privilege to have them here, uh, to speak to us. And it was nice to drive around, see all the kids wearing uh, red shirts. It was really, it was really cool sight. I don't know if you noticed on the website, I'm trying to add some of those photos that were taken on Friday just to celebrate the good, because I, I know there's a lot of areas for improvement. I know we have challenges. Not, not any different from any other school district in Commonwealth, but there's still a lot of good here. And I think if we focus on the negative too much, uh, it gets us off track, and there's a lot of good things. And we're working to improve the things we need to, but there are a lot of great kids. And I'm just pleasantly happy, uh, to see all those kids wearing those shirts last Friday. On October tenth, we started work with the National Council, um, on economy and education. One thing we're doing differently that unlike any other school in the country is we are involving kids in that discussion, students in that discussion, about system design benchmarking, how we can improve our schools. Uh, I think for far too long, we talked to kids rather than involve the kids in the conversation. So one thing we're doing differently is involving some student leaders in the conversation, and we'll have about five or six of them who'll be a part of that work. Uh, Mr. McCall needed a lot of work getting the permissions from the parents and handling the driving and the, um, missing class so they could be a part of this conversation, but it's a really neat way to give them, to give them a chance to get input, but also realistic, uh, real-world opportunities to improve a school system. So we're quite happy to have everyone who's involved in that process be a part of that. On October eighteenth, uh, Ben Franklin is being recognized by, uh, Dr. Mark Greenberg for a model school for their implementation of paths, which is our social-emotional tier-one program. I'll send some information out to everyone uh, here in the next several days, uh, so you can consider attending. And I believe I said you invite, but I give you all the details because we're still fine tuning that. Dr. Greenberg is flying in from Washington, the state of Washington, to recognize the school and to, to provide the, um, award to them. So hopefully you can join us on that thing. Again, I talked to you about, uh, the student leadership and all the great work they're doing, but I would like to celebrate, uh, you as well, those who are part of the Audit Finance Committee chaired by Madam Vice President, heard some really good news again about your, uh, fiscal responsibility and your fiscal management of, you know, saving another one-point-three million dollars, uh, of funds that we can look at investing elsewhere in the capital projects, wherever the board may choose, and that's your decision. But I think what should be, uh, underscored or, or omitted is your leadership, and we thank you for doing that, making the tough decisions to allow great opportunities for kids to occur uh, and allow for great programming, but also being fiscally, uh, responsible. So kudos to all you, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody here tonight from, uh, IAEA or ASME? Anybody here from STUCO?
I'm from SGA.
Yep. Saving you for last, Carolyn. Um, because I knew you were here. Okay, yes, I don't mind embarrassing the young ladies either. Okay. Um, one of the traditions we've had here in Indiana, uh, to kind of piggyback on what Mike said is that we've invited to, and boards are allowed to do this, to invite a student, uh, from the senior high school uh, to participate at the board level as a non-voting, voting member. And Carolyn is our, uh, uh, appointee for this year, and she'll be giving us, uh, reports on the Student Government Association or the SGA. So, Mike, is there anything you'd like to add before we turn it over to her?
Yes, in defense of her, I know she has a busy schedule and may not be every meeting. They did ask if it was okay if they recruit a couple people through, and I said, "That's absolutely fine."
Perfect.
Just make sure the board's comfortable with that.
Okay.
No pressure, right? Uh, you don't have a room full of people. Okay, you go ahead.
So right now, our main initiatives are a pep rally, a bonfire, and homecoming. So the bonfire will be October fifth, and it's going to be seven to nine, and we're going to have it at the school in the senior lot parking lot. And we're, it's just going to be a pep rally, a pep, like, bonfire. So we just get everybody ready for the football game. Then on October seventh, we have the football game, and that's against River Valley, I think. And then October eighth will be the homecoming dance, and that's going to be in the upper commons at the school. Last year it was in the gym, but this year it's going to be in the upper commons again. And October sixth, we're going to have a pep rally, and at the pep rally, that's where the king is crowned, and at the game on Friday, that's where the queen is crowned.
That it?
Hmm.
Very good, very good. Thank you. On, uh, solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to speak to, there is, I'm going to try to find here real quick, a resolution, eight-point-seven. Um, that's a resolution, uh, that I sent over to the business manager. Uh, it was signed by Governor Wolf, and essentially, in a nutshell, it's if there was a, a transfer of property, and they want them to pay penalties and fees. They're saying that they didn't get the notices as taxpayers. Uh, so it waives those penalties and fees for that year. Uh, there's a form that has to be created and attested to that says, "This is why I received it late, why I paid late." Um, so Governor Wolf signed that. That's, in a nutshell, what that, uh, resolution is. But again, that shows up as, I believe, eight-point-seven on your uh, agenda if you have any questions for me. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're down to presentations. Mike?
Okay, uh, if it's okay, I'd like to turn the floor over to Dr. Rig to introduce some incredible guests that we have here this, this evening. As I stated earlier, I got to spend some time with them last Friday, and it was just a great time to get to know them, their personality. Despite our differences where we live and may, uh, and what we do, the one thing is universal, it's common, is everyone's passion to help kids. And that was remarkable with that group. They're an incredible group of individuals, and they're in good hands with Mr. Rig and Dr. Rig. And, uh, we're just really grateful that you're here this evening. So, Dr. Rig?
Um, as Dean of the College of Education and Communications, I said this at our reception last week, there are some things I have to do, and then there are some things that I get to do. And one of the things that I get to do is, uh, make twenty-one new friends, uh, from fourteen different countries. But I'm actually going to turn it over to, uh, Mr. Mike Rig, who is their field experience coordinator. He did all the coordination with the school district, um, for their school placements. So, Mike?
Thanks for having us. Uh, on behalf of Dr. Michelle Petrusi and Dr. Laura Luka-Hans, uh, over at IUP, they're the co-authors of the grant that is funding this program. Uh, I would first of all like to thank the school board for, uh, welcoming, welcoming us into the district, uh, with this partnership. I'd like to thank Superintendent Bukovic. He's been very, uh, comforting and welcoming to all of our teachers. And I also would like to thank the principals. We have three placements this year. Uh, we have three students, uh, three teachers uh, in the junior high school with, uh, Mr. Minnick, Dr. Minnick. Uh, we have five teachers with Ms. Erin Eisenman at Eisenhower Elementary School. We have thirteen teachers, uh, placed with Mr. Wade McElhaney at the high school. So if I did the math right, that's twenty-one teachers, fourteen different countries. Uh, so we thank you for this. I think this is our sixth year partnering with Indiana Area School District. Uh, we missed one year due to COVID. So I'm going to turn it over to each of them. They're going to introduce themselves and tell you, uh, where they're from and their subjects and so forth. So uh, you want to start?
Okay. Hi, everyone. Uh, I'm Peng from Singapore. I'm an elementary math teacher.
Good evening. I'm Joey Tsing Sun from the Philippines.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I'm Francis Ray Sumbo from the Philippines, and my, uh, um, partner teacher is, uh, Mr. Matt Neal.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rica Rodriguez Sanchez. I am from Mexico, and my partner teacher is Mr. Henninga.
Hello. I'm Myklo Multisa. I'm from Botswana, and my partner teacher is Cory Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Manjushri Patel. I'm from India. My partner teacher is Mrs. Lori Datsin, and I run a school of my own in India.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Mujee Brahman. I'm a school librarian from India, and my partner teacher is Mr. Andrew.
Hello?
So, good evening, everyone. I'm Yard from Singapore. Uh, I've been teaching for twenty-four years, and my partner teacher is at Eisenhower Elementary, Mrs. Kendall Walker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Olivia Brenda Nastywa. I'm a teacher of English language and literature. My partner teacher is Mrs. Kayla Stewart. Greetings from Uganda.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Piva. I'm from Indonesia. I am an English teacher, and my partner teacher is Mrs. Kristina.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amor So. I come from Senegal. My partner teacher is Jim Dyker at the senior high school. Thank you.
My name is Panayotska Nehis. I'm from Greece. I'm a primary school teacher, and my partner teacher is Mrs. Jenna Gizi at Eisenhower.
Hi, I'm Danny from Israel. I am, uh, my partner teacher is, uh, Mr. McCochran. I teach math in, for Israel. I have a daughter in Eisenhower School.
Hello. Nice to meet you, everyone. Uh, my name is Anu Arnia. I'm from Finland. I'm a classroom teacher there, and my partner teacher is the wonderful Mrs. Tracy Anderson. And I have to say something about, uh, as you mentioned, uh, Ben Franklin will be recognized for their parts program. So my, my two young children go to Ben Franklin, and they don't speak a word of English. And one morning, my, my daughter was really struggling going to school in the morning, refused to go on the school bus, and it was a whole chaotic situation. And, uh, in the afternoon, she came back smiling from ear to ear because she'd been the parts kid for that day, and just like the teacher realized we did.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name's Joy Kit. I'm from Zealand, and I'm a primary school teacher with a science specialism, and I'm lucky enough to be at least in that class of Eisenhower.
Hi, my name is Fernando Torres. I'm from Mexico. I have a high school teacher, a chemistry science, science teacher, and my partner teacher is Dan Murphy.
Hello, everyone. My name is Assis Moro. I'm from Morocco. I'm a high school teacher. My partner teacher is Mr. Mike Jang.
Hi, everyone. My name's Maiken from New Zealand. I teach design at high school here, and my partner teacher is Joy Dress.
Good evening. My name is Sartliss Sutandi. I'm from Indonesia. I'm an English teacher, and my partner teacher is Dr. Gillian. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm June from Singapore, and I've been teaching for thirty years, and I teach literature, English literature, and my partner teacher is an amazing Mrs. Jigiste from senior high school. She's just so great. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Juan from Brazil. I'm an English teacher. My partner teacher is Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Well, so far, we've heard all good things about their field experiences here in Indiana PA, as always. And they've been very welcomed by their teachers, by their students. They do each give a cultural presentation in their classes, at least one, where they talk about their countries and, uh, give the students the opportunity to ask questions. And it's been a very positive, definitely a win-win for our teachers, our visiting teachers, and your stu-, and our students.
How long will they be here soon?
They're here until the week before IUP commencement, so almost an entire semester.
Oh.
And they spend the first half of their field placements on Wednesdays. They come to Indiana School District. And then we also give them an urban experience. They go to Bursheer High School and Pittsburgh Public Schools for the other half of the semester. So they get both a rural and an urban field experience, and Mike coordinates all of that. They've also been to the ICTC. Uh, they just were there last Friday and loved, loved that experience. And so they, they do multiple. We were at Falling Water on Saturday, and we go to New York City and Washington DC, and so they get the real, um, US experience.
Yeah, they have four more Wednesdays at Indiana before they switch over to Pittsburgh Public, and then they'll do seven weeks at Pittsburgh Public on Wednesdays.
Do we have the date for the cultural fair? Do you have that on the top of your head?
October fourth.
Yes.
October fourth. So if any of you are available and want to walk through the cultural fair, they'll all have their posters set up with displays from their countries. October fifth.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, October fifth.
Good? Very good. Thank you all. Thank you all for coming. Okay, moving on with the agenda.
We have one more.
Oh, oh, IHS Leadership Group.
Yes, sir. If it's okay, Mr. President, we have three young ladies here. They're going to come tonight to present about what leadership, leadership group is at the high school, what they do, what their priorities, what they're trying to accomplish, and get to know you. Um, I got to applaud them for coming in a room with such important people to come here and state their case about what they're trying to achieve and how they're trying to make the high school better. I think it's a great opportunity to be good listeners and hear them out. You're okay with it, sir?
Absolutely.
I'll turn over the floor to you ladies.
So as a whole, we have thirty students from French, Sentra, SGA, SGA, Q Club, Athena, FPLA, and also senior class officers. And our goal for this year is to unify the school and help everyone feel like they belong. And we all have broken down into three groups between mental health, celebrating and appreciating the school, and building a school culture. Um, for mental health, they decided to pick a different subtopic of, yeah, a different subchop-, topic for each month. So this month, it's stress and anxiety, and they chose to do yoga and during tenth period, and it's, um, I think it's five dollars to sign up. And they can come down tenth period and just do yoga and try to relieve some stress. Um, for the celebrating and appreciation committee, they are working on celebrating teachers' birthdays. They sent out a form to get, um, all teachers to have, write down their birthdays, and whether they, they want to, they want no celebration, or very little, or they want, like, us to go all out and celebrate. They're also working on a subs-for-sub program where they will get subs for all the subs that we have at the high school. And for school culture, we're working on decorating lockers for each senior to go past their locker and see something on their locker and just feel appreciated. And we're also working with SGA for the bonfire. And, yeah, I think that's all we have for that. And for Rowdy Routers, um, so far, we've had a very successful turnout for that, and they're planning on a pre-game tailgate where each of us in leadership can sign up to bring a few things, just have a tailgate and try to, like, unify our building a little bit more. Um, we also have the green bandana campaign, where there are students throughout the school that have green bandanas on their bookbag, and it just helps the people, it just helps the school, like, feel, if they aren't feeling that good, it's okay to be not okay. And you can always go up to the other people that have green bandanas, and you just talk about, like, like, what's going on, and you can also direct them to guidance counselors and so on to give them more help if they feel like they need it. And we are also participating in mini-thon, where people come down from all, like, from the school, and we have, like, multiple activities throughout the night, and we raise money for kids that have pediatric cancer. So all the money that gets fundraised and donated goes to kids that have pediatric cancer.
Another thing I'll have, Mr. President, um, Carolyn, do you have anything?
Um, no, just about the school lockers. So we're doing, like, each sport. There's going to be, like, footballs if you play football. And then we're also recognizing all the ICTC students and, like, what they do there. And then every semester, we're going to change it. Like, right now, if you're not in a sport, or you're not do, or you're not in ICTC, you're just going to get a leave, and it's going to say twenty-twenty-three senior. And then as the seasons change and semesters change, it's going to change. Like, next time, it's going to be a snowflake.
Um, I, I just want to say thank you to the ladies for showing up. Thank you for this leadership group, Ms. Duffy and her leadership. And thank you for the board for allowing me to meet with them once a month. Um, Mark Rob, and, like I said, Rob and I went over. It was a great time, and I know it sounds silly, but I mean, I think it meant a lot to both of us just to have lunch together and be able to talk, hear their concerns, hear what they're working on. And then I ended up talking way too much, too. Uh, but we had a good dialogue, and it was just really nice. So I, we, I sincerely thank you for allowing this, because sometimes when you're here, like, in our positions, you forget how important they are, and it was just nice to connect with them and be with them. So thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome, Mike. You're welcome. We're glad, we're glad that it worked out. And thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay. Um, I guess we're on to item three in the agenda, approval of the minutes and the agenda for this evening. Moved in second, questions, comments, or discussion on item three. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motions carry. Board reports. Unfortunately, I didn't make it to the ICTC, but Mike, I think you had a report for us because you were there.
Yep. Uh, as things are continuing to move forward, uh, numbers are high. They are appreciative numbers. We're seeing a nice increase across the area, and other kids are involved in career technical education, and we're looking forward to continue that work and that great progress.
Okay. Tammy, what's going on over at IU twenty-eight?
Actually, Sue has been doing a wonderful job with Erin, and, uh, I'm, I'm really hoping she can continue doing that wonderful job since I'm not quite up to meeting everybody all at once right now.
I'd be happy to do that. Tammy, our meeting is next week, so I don't have a report.
Okay, very good. And then outreach, Tammy, uh, who, who have you delegated for that one?
Actually, I did it the last time. Um, but we haven't had a meeting since the last board meeting. Um, but we did have a library meeting um, that I was able to attend, and they will be doing, um, uh, uh, Evening in the Stacks event, October twenty-eighth. It'll have a silent auction, music, appetizers, a costume competition. Looks like fun. I invite everybody to join. Um, and on another, another library thing, they were given a memorial fund to allow patrons to acquire library cards free of charge. So they will be starting to do that. So that's it.
Okay, thanks, Tammy. I've attended those Evening in the Stacks, and they are worthwhile, um, participating in. Tom, how about, uh, academic? What's going on there?
Said that he was not feeling well, and asked me if Sue could cover for him.
Sure. I don't, I actually don't have my notes from the committee meetings. I didn't know I was going to report, but I will, uh, do the motions on here.
That'll be great.
We have five-point-two professional service agreement, Title I services, five-point-three YMCA lifeguard agreement, five-point-four student disciplinary agreement, uh, five-point-five grants, the PAT, the TAM, and the PCC, PCCD grants, and then the partnership agreement with Saint Francis University. And I'd like to take them as a whole, if that's okay.
Are there any objections?
Second.
Okay, moved in second on the five-two through five-six. Questions, comments, or discussion by the board members? Mike, is there anything you'd like to add to on any of these motions?
Nope. We discussed these at the last either academic committee, and partially we talked about these tonight, policy personnel, so I feel comfortable if you're comfortable moving forward.
I could just say that the Saint Francis agreement was not discussed at the executive committee meeting, but that is simply an agreement between us and the university to allow student-teacher placements and field experiences should the opportunity present itself, so.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from the board members? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. Cindy, policy and personnel.
We had our meeting this evening before the executive session and immediately after the Audit and Finance Committee. We covered items that are all on the agenda except for one. Um, we're talking about, uh, hiring a new, another LPN position. We updated one of the job descriptions for the housekeepers. We talked about the grants that we just, uh, gave approval for with the academic section, and the student, or the employee handbook is being approved tonight also. So we've got six-point-two through six-point-nine. Um, six-point-two, I would like to take them all as consent. Six-point-two is approving the employee handbook for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. Uh, six-point-three is a, a standard request for leave of absence from one of our custodial staff. Six-point-four is solicitor services, and we're, our solicitor is moving from one, um, law firm to another. Uh, six-point-five resignation of two people in the support staff, Mary Straka, a parent educator, and Melissa Lane Lucart, an LPN. Six-point-six is creation of the LPN position that I spoke about previously. Six-point-seven is a job description that, oh, I guess it was on there, sorry, that I also spoke about previously, updating the housekeeper job description. Six-point-eight is, um, I lost my paper. Six-point-eight is extra-duty, extra-pay assignments. Um, senior hydromatics technical assistant for show number one, show number two, and the musical. And that will be, uh, we're putting forward, voting on Lee Schweitzer for that position. Plus, we'll be given these names and, um, salaries afterwards. And then six-point-nine is employment of professional personnel, and that would be Courtney Quinselman to be employed as a behavior and mental health counselor slash school psychologist.
Moved in second, questions, comments, or discussion by the board members? Mike, is there anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I'd like to do is congratulate you on. You've been an important part of the team for several years. Congratulations on the new position. We wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, guys, for the support. I appreciate that.
Yes, very much. I've been very pleased, Ron. No question about it. Further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry. Okay, Terry, buildings and grounds.
Okay. Thank you, Walter. There was, uh, no committee meeting since the last meeting, and there is one this coming Monday at five-thirty. Uh, update on Eisenhower Elementary, pretty much same as the last several updates. We've been holding, uh, weekly meetings with the architect and engineers, just continuing to work through and trying to get the process to where we can approve what's called a design development stage, and, uh... And really not much else there.
Keep going.
Yeah.
Keep going.
So 7.3, security camera proposal, based on the recommendation, building grounds, transportation committee, the proposal from Direct Tech LLC for installation of additional interior cameras at the high school at an estimated cost of $76,798 and 25 cents per person.
Questions, comments, discussion on the board? Mike, is there anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
Nope. Nope, I think so.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Julia, looks like your turn on finance committee.
Thank you, Walter. We had some, a good report tonight. We had a short meeting tonight and we have Jared gave us some very good preliminary numbers wrapping up the last fiscal year. And he's right now projecting a surplus of roughly $1.3 million. We've had a little bit of, it's delightful to hear that news. Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Mike. $90,000 in additional revenue on an insurance claim with Eisenhower. Actually, it's interesting. We're going to get to the bottom of this, about $370,000 in additional revenues for earned income. And you don't quite have any answer on why that's happened because you're going to try to
Yes, ma'am.
figure that out. Our revenues, our revenues are up, our expenditures are coming down. So do you want to make a comment about, you know, some highlights that you?
Yeah, the revenues are kind of down across the board, across all the major. When I say they're down, they're up compared to the previous year, but they are not meeting our budgeted numbers for '21, '22. Part of that surplus is also created, we haven't yet, until the board approves the transfer. Haven't transferred the 200-some thousand that was budgeted for as part of the reimbursements, the capital reserve for the turf replacement at the high school. We saw significant savings on the bond refinancing that we did last fall, which helped create some of that surplus as well. But really, it's just kind of all over the place outside placements, or not even outside placements, just our purchase services. Anything we really paid to outside vendors saw a decrease. But revenues, I think, played a very important role in that as well, creating that surplus.
Yeah, I think it's been a lot of discipline on the part of administration and of course, the board's been, I think, supportive. The big discussion we had though is that we had talked a few months ago about putting money in reserve for our capital projects. And as the, as the taxpayers know, we have a lot of them. Last year, I think we put million, one point, or the year before, we put 1.7 million.
Yes, ma'am.
This year, we talked tonight about putting the full surplus in to the reserve and we have until the end of October to make that decision. So the committee's recommending we go along with that. We may be able to, you know, when the preliminary numbers are done and the audit is finished in early October, we may have an opportunity to put more in. So committee appreciate their hard work on it and think about it because we'll be voting. I'm not sure when exactly, but we will be voting. A couple of motions tonight. Always very grateful for donations. So we have a nice donation through Holly Smith for some nice pieces of furniture. We're having an auction. And then Ron has already about some of our goods, which, and that'll be like a preview, it'll be an online auction. And then Ron Raypack, Attorney Raypack, did talk to us about, earlier about the Act 57 resolution.
Josh, what is in there?
So I think, and there, I looked at the bills, nothing seemed to be out of ordinary within the fourth and nothing seemed to pop out, too. Okay, so I would like to take all of these as consent items. So that would be 8.2, approval of bills, the donation from Holly Smith, 8.4, affordable care employer reporting, auction items, and 8.5, 8.6, the settlement agreement, and 8.7 is the Act 57 resolution.
Okay, moved in second, questions, comments, or discussion on items 8.2 through 8.7?
Can you tell me what the settlement agreement is?
That, that was the tax assessment appeal for the mall. It sold for 7 million. Actually, it sold for 6.8 and we got it up to 7 million for the Fairmark.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motions carry. Down to number nine, closing. The first item though is PSBA elections. So apparently we have to pass a resolution supporting the following people for positions with the Pennsylvania School Board Association. Correct?
Correct.
So may I have a motion to support Michael Crossitt, Allison Mathias, Kathy Swope, and Roberta MacMarcus? It's been moved in second. Okay, questions, comments, or discussion? Yes, Julia?
I never liked to vote for this, but Ron, I don't know what any of them are standing for, but are these, these, there's only one for each position.
I, I think that, aren't they the recommended candidates coming out of PSBA? And there's only one.
There could have been other candidates, correct?
I, that I don't, I don't control or have anything to do with PSBA. So I have no idea.
So you don't know how that works?
I, yeah, I don't.
I think it's strange that we're not told that there was, you know, they're just supporting somebody. How many candidates there might have been?
Yeah, that, that I don't, I do not know. I think that's just part of the, your, when you enter the organization, that they allow you to have a voting delegate and that, that's the recommended candidates. But again, I don't know how they do it. I'm not part of PSBA.
Are the ones in number three, are they local? The two last names are local, family names.
I don't think they were. I read those bios that we were sent. I don't think they were local.
Yeah, there are other school board members on other school boards, right? So they're not here. But I don't know them other than what I saw in the resume.
Yeah.
But they don't say if they're any of the candidates.
No, we only got these candidates and we got brief bios about each of these.
So I'm reluctant to support them, which is not my first time.
It's, nobody's pushing your arm, Julia. Okay, are there any other questions or comments on it? Okay, all those in favor of 9.1, 1, 2, and 3, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries eight to one. Okay, we did have some, oh, public comment on agenda items. Anybody online? Nope, nobody here. All right, we did have some enclosures tonight. Ron, you want to give us a report on the executive session?
Yeah, sure, Mr. President. Part of the executive session was talk about the personnel matters that were hired here for the agenda and a large portion of exec session was talk about the insurance, or the Eisenhower insurance litigation claim that we're currently pending right now.
Okay, thank you. Our next board meeting is September the 26th at 7 o'clock. Our next committee meetings, we have an outreach on the 19th at 5, buildings and grounds at 5:30 that same day, and audit and finance on the 26th. We have a motion to adjourn. Move to second. Okay, Julia, second. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. We stand adjourned.